Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, we have an optional prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Mercyful God, we may not have lived as you want. Help us not to be angry with the world and nurse grudges with the vengeance. We need to share with the needy and build up our neighbors with words of kindness. We need not to indulge in evil, but to forgive wrong with grace. Help us to come together to do our best. We ask this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Chairman Leon?
Here.
Before we start the hearing of the public, Dr. Faust wants to make a statement from his district.
More than a statement, just a welcome to everybody to Harbor Creek and Brevler Village. If you are looking for something to do every once in a while and to read an interesting history, you've got to read the interesting history of this particular property. It holds some memories for me, my son who is in the crowd tonight. This is the first place I let him cross the street to ride his bike and be able to use this big parking lot here. And the first place he really rode his bike was across the street. At Klein School, we lived until just a few months ago, about a half a mile up the street. This is a beautiful setting that we have here. We appreciate the staff of Brevler Village who is here tonight for hosting us, and we hope you enjoy the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Carl. In the hearing of the public, anyone that has called in will receive five minutes. Those that wish to speak after that receive three minutes. First one up is John Stoll, Waterford Township.
Thank you. Over here, I expect.
That's fine.
I wanted to speak today about small pool treatment facilities. I own one, and it was designed for people who can't have the normal system because of the land that they live on, all clay, and not enough topsoil to support a mountain system. It's designed to treat sewage up to 2,000 gallons per day. And once it's been treated, it can be discharged into a squail. I'm not sure what that is. I think it's kind of like a wetland or ground, probably ground if they accept it, if you don't have your property, or water. Mine goes into a large pond, which eventually summits the water line, puts water in the ground. Summit comes to Erie. Water from above passes, then goes on down all the way to the ocean. My problem with the small treatment facility, and I was, I called to make the request to speak, a very efficient young lady convinced me I should tell her what to talk about. I was reluctant to tell her, but she was persuasive enough by faith. So she sent me a letter telling me that I had bad speed, and also copied, and I understand you folks all have a copy of it, of the enforcement procedure for the small pool treatment facilities. I had some personal experience with this when I was a township superintendent in Water. I reported a raw sewage discharge, and the person that reported it was responsible. But he said, "It's not just been purchased, we're going to develop it." So they just did it. Well, the only time anyone requires a test of sewage system is the bank who's lending the money to the buyer, who paid cash in a distance with this property was bought by a group of people who work in the business of developing property. It all boils down to violations, and I understand there are numerous violations. I think the amount of small pool treatment facilities in Erie County is over 300 and approaching 400. That's just what I, what I think. It may not be correct, so I don't go with that. But when they find a violation, they're notified, and they have 90 days to approve it. They need to send, put out a letter, and how they plan how they're going to prove it. After the 90 days, they're inspected, and if they haven't complied, then the county health department reports them to Big Brother, DEP. The DEP does some things, and right now, there are many situations where the sewage, supposedly is treated, is not treated, yet it can go to a squail, it can go to ground, it can go into water. My thinking on this is, I hope it's correct, if we have water and it's polluted, it evaporates. Evaporation is the moisture going up into the sky, meaning it's like a dust from raining someplace else. So we're not doing anybody a favor if that's what's happening. And in the letter, I have the right copy here, the NPDES, I don't know what the acronym is for, something about, they have a permit, they permit this. To get the small pool treatment facility, you go through a large procedure. You have to satisfy that they're not on any reservations at their water or so on, so forth. Once it's approved, and I suppose the MTC, MCD, MEE, ESS, it's two, and it says that Erie County Health Department has jurisdiction to, they don't think the Erie County Health Department has jurisdiction to enforce the ACDP. So I'm going to suggest that you folks enact ordinance or an act that when this violation is found and is not treated after 90 days, they, or you hire someone to correct it, and then that could be a lien against the property. And with a lien on your property, when the sheriff comes along, when you've executed that lien, puts a sign on the door that they're going to sell in 30 days, you're going to get some action. We need to do something to control pollution. I think we all agree on that, and I thank you for the opportunity to discuss it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Randy Barnes, District 5.
Thank you, Chairman. I too, along with Councilman Powell, welcome everyone to Harbor Creek. I'm here to report from the real world today. And in the real world, we have a Northern Pennsylvania Regional College that has been very effective and is gaining ground. The college has been meeting with stakeholders in the area, and they've been meeting with stakeholders for almost a year. They met with local manufacturers, you may recall about four years ago, manufacturers locally, abandoned together, created a group to do more training, apprentice programs and things. Well, the NPRC has been meeting with that group, and they've developed a curriculum where 90 hours' worth of classroom training, another 600 hours' worth of on-the-job training in machine shops. So the NPRC is the real world. I know what council wants. Council wants us to build, I don't know, is it $10 or $12 million edifice so we can educate people at a low cost? Now, how do we spend $10 million on a building but do it at a low cost? Now, we look at Mercyhurst has recently announced they're going to close the Northeast Campus. Why is that? Preco Center failed because, it wasn't because there was too many people trying to go there. Nationally and locally, colleges and universities are seeing a lowering of attendance. But yet, our council wants to spend $10 million of our tax money. But, you know, I hear the argument all the time. You know, we've been paying all these taxes, all these years, for a community college that other people have and we don't have one. Is that a hissy fit? I mean, is that a definition of a hissy fit? Now, did anyone complain in Clarion County when Mercyhurst College, just two months ago, got a half a million dollars of our tax money? For an athletic field, our tax money goes to Mercyhurst College, a half a million dollars in August for their athletic field. Now, how do the people all around the state that don't have a community college, don't have a university, don't have a Penn State campus, feel about their tax dollars putting new turf at Mercyhurst College? So this stuff about, we've been paying all these, we get a lot of things here that other counties get, don't get, and will they get things that we don't get? But this hissy fit about, we've been paying our taxes, we want a community college, I don't like that. For every time I hear that, if I had a tank of gas, I could go to California. So in the real world, the NPRC is in existence, is doing it low cost, and is expecting people to sit maybe in front of a screen, there's maybe six of us here, sitting in front of a screen, and professors talking to us, helping us to learn at a low cost. I'm telling you, the real world today, if you can't learn from a screen, you have no value. You can't work as a nurse's aide if you can't work a screen. And if you can't learn from a screen, if you can't enter data from a screen, if you can't read a screen, and if you can't learn from a screen, you can't do a lowly job, the lowliest of jobs. So I ask you, please, 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 please. We have more training. How about the tech after hours? Did you know we can go right up to tech after hours? Get credentials in auto mechanics, construction trades, machine technology, patient care assistant, welding technology, culinary management, serve safe management certificate? We can be a machinist in 90 days, and your training could be free. Do we know that? Do you know what? These classes aren't full. Why aren't they full? I'll tell you why they aren't full. Because people don't want to get off the couch and go do something. That's why they aren't full. But we're going to spend $10 million on a building so we can hire, I don't know, 30, 40 people, meet some counselors, got to have some guidance counselors, got to have a logo. Now, I like this logo. This is the I-80 view. I-80 looking northwest, you're looking over Clarion County, trees, cook's floors, and you see this beautiful sunset over Lake Erie. That's us. We've got the chance to do something to get national attention. Train people right over in Harbor Creek High School, get a certificate, get an associate's degree by going to Harbor Creek High School and using the existing building. I could go on and on and on, but I think reasonable people understand this community college, yeah, it was nice, and it was a grand plan, but we asked for the NPRC five years ago. Senator Wiley asked for the NPRC because the local people said we need the NPRC here, and we got the NPRC. Don't be children and say, "Well, I got this now, but I want something different." Hey, thank you. Spend five minutes, four seconds.
Anyone else wish to agree here? Anyone else? Once, twice, third, and last time? Thank you very much. Go on with the meeting. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of previous.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments? That would be for both the regular meeting and the special meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, roll call.
On the motion, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, reports of county officials, county executive, and or designate.
I'll divide, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call. Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee met on Thursday, September 12th, 2019, and at that meeting, we moved forward to present on tonight's budget, tonight's agenda, items A, B, C, D, H, and I. And that concludes the finance report. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Anderson. Next, Personnel Committee, Mrs. Fatika.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee met on September 12th at the conclusion of the Finance Committee, and we agreed to put on the agenda for this evening items E, F, and G. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Fatika. Anything under others? Second reading of ordinance number 56, title only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 56, 2019, Hotel Room Rental Tax, amending ordinance 135 of 2012.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
By Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments? Roll call.
On ordinance 56, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, entitled only, second reading of ordinance 57.
A second reading of ordinance number 57, 2019, Amending the Administrative Code of Erie County, Article 3, Section 1G1, Purchasing and Sales Procedures, Quotation Procedure.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Comments? Roll call.
On ordinance 57, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Under New Business, I'll entertain a motion to vote for second reading of ordinance 60, which would be A, B, E, F, and G.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
By Dr. Faust, seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Comments? If not, roll call.
On the motion to amend the agenda, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Okay, second reading of ordinance number 60, title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 60, 2019, 2019 Children and Youth Services Fund Budget, Revised Expenditures of $25,000, and Creation of Expense Line for Court-Ordered Placement.
So moved. Second. Seconded by Mr. Horton, seconded by Dr. Faust. Comments? Roll call.
An ordinance 60, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Next, the second reading of ordinance 61, title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 61, 2019, 23rd, 2019 General Fund Budget, Supplemental Appropriation of $125,000, and New Line Item for Wexford Settlement.
So moved. Second. Moved by Mr. Anderson, or I'm sorry, moved by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Any comments? Roll call on ordinance 61.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Okay, first reading, title only, of ordinance 62.
This is a first reading of ordinance number 62, 2019, First 2019 Gaming Fund Budget, Supplemental Appropriation of $3,750, and New Line Items for Distribution of Remaining 2018 Neighborhood Watch Grant Funds.
Next, the first reading of ordinance 63, entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 63, 2019, Amending Ordinance 83 of 2014, Revised Fee Schedule in Department of Corrections.
Next, the second reading of ordinance 64, title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 64, 2019, 2019 Appointed Officials Salary Ordinance, Full and Part-Time Assistant Public Defenders.
So moved. Second. Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments?
I would make some comments. I'd like to make a couple brief comments. Look, I'm really, really pleased, Mr. Chair, to announce that I'll be definitely voting yes on this, and very proud of the work, not only the public defender's office does, but our district attorney's office as well, but I know that the public defenders have been undergoing massive personnel changes, and in our attempt to fill those positions, we just haven't been able to have the salaries that we were offered. I did some thinking about it, and I thought that when a person comes out of school having invested over $300,000 to come in the term, to come in, to ask those people, those men and women, to come in to work for $45,000, $50,000, it's just really, really crazy. And I wish I could give them more, quite frankly, but I'll be voting yes on this. Very happy to see.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, roll call on ordinance 64.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Next, the second reading of ordinance 65, title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 65, 2019, 2019 Children and Youth Services Fund Budget, Revised Expenditures of $127,500 for Creation of 19 Bureau Positions.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Fatika, seconded by Dr. Faust. Comments? Roll call on ordinance 65.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Second reading of ordinance 66, title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 66, 2019, Approval of Four-Year Agreement Between the County of Erie and the Erie County Detectives Association.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Comments? Roll call.
An ordinance 6. Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Next, this Resolution 31, title only, please.
Mr. Chairman, actually, it was a different resolution that was on the table. Yes, sir. Resolution number 31, 2019, Approving a 10-Year Contract Between the Erie County Board of Elections and Dominion Voting.
So moved. Second. Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Horton.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer an amendment to this resolution, and the amendment would be, the contract has been amended with agreement between our solicitor and Dominion Voting, so I would like to have the wording of this amendment be to amend the contract as amended in paragraph 8 with the recommended changes agreed upon between our solicitor, Tom Talrico, and Dominion Voting.
Have a second today? Second. Mr. Anderson, the man, seconded by Mr. Horton. If not, roll call on the amendment.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Now, the Resolution 31 has amended.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, I, as a candidate, I am unable to sit on the election board, so I couldn't have much of an impact on what voting system we ultimately chose by the election. I did go to the different demos, et cetera, that we held in Erie County. I made it no secret that I thought clear ballot was the best system for Erie County. I think it's the simplest, I think it has the smallest footprint for our poll workers to set out to be able to execute elections on election day. It was the most cost-effective in the end. Dominion done a very impressive presentation to us, and so it's not a disparaging, but I'm going to vote no on this, just I don't think it was the best system for Erie County, so that's the only way I can express my thinking, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a few comments in regards to the new system that we're voting on tonight and the contract. And this brings to conclusion roughly about a year and a half of work, that's been done, a lot of hard work from all of the members of council, from the county clerk, and particularly from the staff in the elections office, Kim Alexander, our former director, and Tanya, our new director. We have worked tirelessly to ensure that what is brought forward to the Erie County voters is a system that both works and is flexible under the unmandated, I guess, yeah, the unfunded mandate that has been brought forth from both federal government and through state. Ultimately, it is a responsibility of the county to ensure that we have a voting system that works, that's secure, and that gives confidence to the voters of Erie County that when they cast their vote, their vote is safely casted. And I have to say that in all of the systems that we looked at, Dominion gave us the most flexibility as a hybrid between what we know and what we've given to past elections and to the voters as far as voting by machine, but we now also have the mandate to have a paper ballot backup. The trends are potentially moving towards more and more paper voting in the future, but we don't know if that will continue that way or if there'll be reversals to the contrary. And so, the system we're putting in place gives us the middle ground to be able to move one way or another. And with that said, Erie County patiently has moved through all of the steps that was necessary with all of the vendors that came in and made presentations. We made sure that we had the documents put in so we would receive reimbursement from the HAVA fundings, the leftover HAVA fundings, which Erie County will receive its share of roughly $318,000. And we were also patient in waiting to see what the governor and the legislature would do. The governor came forward with putting reimbursement of 60% onto buying new voting equipment, but there's only certain things that fall under that category. there's only certain things that fall under that category. We were able to work with our new vendor by splitting between choosing the vendor and now voting for the contract rather than just choosing the vendor and voting in the contract at the same time. By doing that, it gave us the opportunity to sit down with the vendor and go over the contract to ensure that Erie County would get the maximum amount of potential reimbursement funding for the equipment that's available by the governor, and we were able to get them down below, under $3 million in the contract. So, the amount of money that we have available for reimbursement from, that will be reimbursed from the state is 2.6 million of the 3 million, of the roughly 3 million, of which 60% will be reimbursable, which gets us to about 1.4 million, and then the 318,000 of the federal money, which takes us up to 1.7 million roughly of reimbursable funds, which means that Erie County taxpayers will pay 1.3 million dollars towards new election equipment. Now, with that being said, our contract also includes equipment and all of the licensing fees and working with the new vendor for 10 years. So, for a 10-year period, Erie County, after reimbursements, will pay 1.3 million dollars. We are very proud, and we have worked very hard to ensure that the taxpayers of Erie County were protected and that we made sure that we put forth the best contract for Erie County and for the taxpayers of Erie County. Now, I have to say with one stipulation. We still have some unfinished business after the new election equipment contract, and that is that the state law has not caught up with the amount of ballots that we have to print each year, which is 110% of the registered voters. So, now that we have paper ballot backup, we have to print 110% of 180,000 voters, which is roughly 190,000 ballots, both in the primary and in the general election, which means that we'll be printing 380,000 ballots each year, and we have begun to talk to printers, and that the cost of doing that is going to roughly be about $40,000 per year. Now, the whole reason that we've done the paper backup is because that was the unfunded mandate brought forth by the state, but yet the paper is not one of the reimbursable items for the 60%. So rest assured that we will be sending to CCAP and to the Department of Elections and the governor and the legislature, asking why that is not one of the reimbursable items, and requesting that it become one, number one, and number two, asking that the law be changed in the state so we don't have to have the 110% of the printed ballot, but that it become a more realistic number, so we don't have to have the wasted expense by those voters that choose to use the actual ballot marking device rather than the paper ballot. So, with that said, I'm very proud of the work that we've done and that we're presenting this forward tonight for final passes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say thank you to everybody on council, especially Mr. Smith and Carl, for all the work that went into the choosing of the machines. It was quite laborious, that's for sure. Thank you.
Other comments? If not, roll call on Resolution 31, as amended.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, Resolution 32, entitled only please.
Resolution Number 32, 2019, a resolution in support of Jake Schwab's Worker Safety Bill, HB 1082.
Second.
By Mr. Horton, seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any comments? Roll call.
On Resolution 32, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, we have appointments.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item J, K, and L together as one motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we separate item L.
Okay, then we have to go each independently. First, the possible appointment of Mrs. Christian Bowers to the Erie County Library Board for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2022. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Fatika, seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry. May we start with Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Still yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next is the possible appointment of Selena Oglo to the Erie County MHID Board. Do I have a...
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Fatika.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments? Roll call.
On the appointment, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next is the possible appointment of Lisa Austin, Erie County Planning, representing the district group. Roll call on that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I just, I have, I am sympathetic to Mr. Horton wanting this appointment to go forward, and I think Lisa Austin would be a good appointee. But like it or not, this, the council, the majority action, has said that there's a process to put in place for members of the planning commission to go onto this commission. I have a, an appointment up in my district at this moment. I'm getting the proper recommendations from Northeast Township to put that name forward, and I hope that it would go through. You know, we tried to change that back to where it would be more of a direct appointment by the members of council. I supported that motion. It was defeated, and at the moment, the way that we do our business is that it has to go through the planning commission. I don't prefer that, but that's what we have voted on as majority, is the process that we've set up, and we have to follow that, and I think we have to change that if we can as soon as possible, and I'll be glad to approve Ms. Austin's appointment at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I brought this appointment forward, and I, without the flair of theatrics, without being theatrical about it, but I had a mind to come in here and count down every appointment that has gone forward since I was appointed to this board. I think it's probably about 300 now, and with a few exceptions for procedural, Scott Pike, I think one was a colleague of ours was leaving the office and we said, oh, we would prefer his replacement chosen. And I think there were one or two incidents like that, but I can't remember. Well, I do remember, actually, that this is the only appointment that hadn't been approved, and I'm well aware of the procedure that this body unfortunately allowed to go forward, and that procedure being, I, you know, the secondary subcommittee, like the planning commission, institute bylaws that run contrary to the county administrative code, which should always supersede any of that stuff. And I brought this forward, hoping that my colleagues would see the error of their ways. They really should go back and change that, but in any event, the planning committee bylaws, or no planning committee bylaws, it's indefensible to say that I have an appointment from my district and then you pick my appointment for me from a list of nominees. Now, the last time I solicited that list of nominees, I was submitted a total of one name. It said, "Meet Ms. Jane Go. She's going to make a fine planning commission," and I laughed. So I wouldn't know who that lady was if she walked in the door and kissed me on the mouth right now, but she's my appointment. And I think the administrative code, which is part of the Bible of the Home Board Charter, or in conjunction with the Home Board Charter, I think sadly, this body allow our civic-giving authority to be chiseled away in such a manner. Well, quite frankly, it makes me sick to myself. And I think the next time that I do come, and I, the next time I do come forward here with an appointment, because I'll bring Ms. Austin's name every month, and they'll turn it down every month. And I took that. At some point, at some point, someone's going to ask how did this happen? And I'll be able to go back and look at history, and we'll be able to go back and look at the notes, and we'll be able to go back and look at the votes. And we'll see that it was a, this is where this body started to give away its authority. And I think over the, since that vote, or since we've allowed that to happen, I think we've given up our authority to name people to the general authority, and we cede back to the administration. And I think there might be one more. And if we're going to keep giving our authority away here at the county, we might as well go over and join city councils where they look like one body to me. It's a reason that there's a separation between the three bodies, the courts, the executive, and the legislature. But when we give it away, we run into things like community college issues. When we give it away, we run into things like, we want to expand the summer jobs program, but they don't. When we give it away, so I'm going to ask my colleagues, don't give it away. If you're not going to vote for this appointment, and I like them to be voted on, because I'm like the king of transparency. I want everybody's gaze to be their gaze. I want the public to know how you vote on this stuff. I want them to know how I vote on this stuff, how I feel about this stuff. And here's how I feel. I feel that Ms. Austin was discriminated against because she was part of a lawsuit, and that was said to me, she was part of a lawsuit for action against the city, which led to the bylaws, which led to the no vote, which led to here we are. Personality should never dictate what talent serves, who deserves who deserves. So the next time I come here, I'll ask Mr. Smith and Cole and Jessica to provide me a name of every appointment that's been taken, that's been appointed since I've been here, and I'll read them off like the names on the Vietnam War until we get up to Ms. Austin. So I'm prepared to say bye. Mr. Chairman, that's my comments.
Thank you. Before I ask for other comments, I've been making some comments. You know, you talk about what the administrative code is, what some of the issues are as far as appointments to authorities, boards, commissions, and in this particular case to the planning commission, and the only time I hear any comments on that is when it's convenient or something. And I don't buy it for one particular reason, and that is we, as council members, are representatives of our constituents. We are the ones that are responsible for making these appointments. I've heard many say, well, you know, let's get a committee and let's figure out who's going to be appointed in this. That isn't what it's all about. If that's the situation, then we should leave here and let the community come in and vote every time we vote. But I believe as a representative in a district, you should have the right to be able to make a selection wherever it's at as far as an appointment is concerned. Now, we talked about some, I know that many of us, even in the Authorities Act, I think they say two terms, but guess what? I can, I can bet that many of the members in this council have voted for more than two terms for appointments. Yet I didn't hear anyone say, well, you know, that's against the Act of the Administrative Code. Again, I feel this is an appointment that has to be made by the council member that's representing, representing that particular district. Those are my comments on it. I don't know, did we get a, did we get an approval? No motion?
There was no motion yet.
Well, I'll entertain a motion so that we, if necessary, we can continue to discuss it, but I'll entertain a motion for the appointment of Lisa Austin, the Erie Planning Commission. So...
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton. You seconded that, Scott?
Yes, sir.
And seconded by Scott. Any other comments on this? Go ahead, Carl.
Mr. Chairman, you made the comment about the fact that we would have the opportunity to do the nominating because we had the rights to do that. What this planning commission has set up is the municipalities of the district of that council member would make recommendations, and from those municipalities, this didn't come out of the air. Those municipalities have the right to put someone forward that they recommend, maybe even from their own planning commission, somebody they know that understands the planning law. And so those people, those municipalities have the right to put people forward. And I understand that only one of the municipalities that Mr. Horton represents put a person forward, and that's why he's only got one name.
Any other comment?
That's why they said one name. Mr. Horton does have one name. It's Lisa Austin.
Any other comments? If not, I'll take a roll call.
On the appointment, Dr. Faust?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion for the shell of parcels for M, N, O, P, and Q. So moved. Seconded by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Horton. Any comments on any of those? Roll call.
On the parcels, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Move.
Move. Stand your ground. Thank you.